The Royal Commission into Defense of Veterans Suicide is now in session. Please be seated.
Good afternoon, Mr Singleton.
Good afternoon Commissioners. This afternoon's witness is Captain Bradley Francis of the Royal Australian Navy. ITV sworn or affirmed?
Captain Brad Francis, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
I might ask the operator to display the tender list for this session. Commissioners, as you can see, there are a number of documents over several pages. Some of them are confidential, in some cases, for various reasons, including that some of the material in the overall evidence of Captain Francis is classified. There are other grounds, no doubt, for confidentiality claims, and some claims are yet to be resolved. Nonetheless, I tender all of the documents listed. Those which are marked as confidential or subject to a claim, I tender confidentially. In so far as claims have not been resolved, they may be re-tended in chambers on a different basis later.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. They'll be accepted on that basis and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers. Thank you.
Captain Francis, could you tell the Commissioners your full name, rank, and current posting in the Navy?
Bradley Michael Francis, Captain in the Royal Australian Navy, and my current position is Commander of the Submarine Force.
I'll ask the operator to display the first page of the main statement by Captain Francis in its redacted form. While that's being arranged, is it the case, Captain, that you've made a main statement and it has been redacted in a couple of different versions?
That is correct.
Is the statement in its entirety true and correct to the best of your knowledge and ability?
Yes, with the addition of the supplementary report that was submitted last night.
All right, so that, in effect, changes a bit of the evidence, or adds to it?
Yes, it does.
And in so far as it adds to it, it corrects it?
Yes, it does.
Is that supplementary statement also true and correct to the best of your knowledge and ability?
Yes, it is.
Apart from the material covered by the supplementary statement, are there any other corrections that you need to make?
Not at this time.
All right. The operator's acting under...
Have we seen the supplementary statement?
I doubt, Commissioners, whether you have. We've only received it in the last few hours, as I understand it. I don't anticipate it'll feature...
Do you know whether it's in the court book?
I don't... Yes, it is, I'm told. Commissioner, I might just note that the operator's only been given very late indications of what we'll be displaying and so on, and this particular session does involve classification issues and so on that may require extra attention as we go along. I'm sure they're doing their best at the moment to get the statement up, but while we're doing that, when did you... Are you the Commander of the Submarine Force in the Australian Navy?
Yes, I am.
When did you commence in that role?
I assume Commander of the Submarine Force on the 25th of November 2021.
How long do you... At the time of your appointment, was there an expected departure date from the role?
The anticipated tenure of my role was communicated as between two and three years.
Do you presently have an anticipation of how long you'll remain in the role?
I expect to hand over my responsibilities next week.
Now, is the Submarine Force commonly called SUB-4?
That is a correct acronym that we use.
I hope you'll forgive me. I'll try and use it from... I'll probably muck it up from time to time, and the SUB-4 is based at HMAS Stirling in Western Australia.
That's correct.
Do you have a copy of your statement with you?
Yes, I do.
Just feel free to refer to it generally as we go along, but I'll particularly ask you to open it up, and we'll have a look at page nine and paragraph 17. The purpose will often be just to remind you or let you have a look at what you have said, where, so far as I can glean its relevance to what I'm asking. Are you and SUB-4 essentially in existence and in your posting to keep a submarine fleet ready for use, including by keeping a complement of submariners and officers fit and ready to crew the submarines?
I think that is a correct characterization.
How many submarines does SUB-4 have?
There are six submarines that are components of the Submarine Force.
And is each one of them a Collins-class submarine?
Yes, that is correct.
Is a Collins-class submarine 77.8 metres long?
Yes.
Seven metres... 7.8 metres a beam?
Yes.
And has a draft of seven metres?
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that much of a submarine's volume is occupied by plant and equipment, including armaments and defences?
Yes, I agree. That's a correct characterization.
The armaments include, depending on any particular deployment perhaps, but missiles, torpedoes, and mines?
Yes.
And a typical crew, indicatively, would be in the order of, say, 10 officers and 38 sailors plus trainees?
The composition of the crew depends on the nature of the tasking. It is common that for submarines to carry trainees, but may not always carry trainees.
And in terms of an indicative size of the number of people who have to fit into a tube of the dimensions described, we're talking about something in the order of 50 plus or minus something?
That is correct.
And the maximum that a submarine can accommodate, in effect, in a proper way, would be about 60 or around about that?
That is correct.
How long can a Collins-class submarine stay at sea with all those people in that small space?
The endurance of a Collins-class submarine is dependent on the nature of the tasking, but it is fair to say that the submarine can remain at sea for weeks at a time.
Did you see the Four Corners program? Was there recently about the sub-force?
Yes, I did.
Was it accurate in so far as it gave a description of how long Collins submarines can stay at sea?
I don't recall what that... What data was presented with respect to the endurance of the submarines?
Do... Pardon me for getting some of my knowledge of ADF matters from watching movies, and they're mostly about the army anyway, which is no doubt appalling to you, but do submariners parade in the sense of being lined up and inspected by an officer or some other person?
Can you provide further context to that question?
One sees in the movies ranks of soldiers usually, but perhaps others, lined up, often at attention, usually neat and tidy, and someone, usually an officer, walks up and down the rank, having a look at uniforms and making sure that the person is neat. Maybe an arm, a rifle or something is inspected. So I'm talking about that kind of parade, that kind of inspection. Firstly, do you recognize the description from the movies at least?
Yes, I do.
Does that sort of thing happen with the submarine force?
On occurrence, submariners as members of the Navy fulfill ceremonial and parade requirements.
Do you yourself, as the captain, ever do an inspection of that kind?
There are occasions where I may be an inspecting officer for a parade or ceremonial duties. It is not a significant portion of my role or a common occurrence for that to take place.
In so far as it happens, I take it ordinarily it would be done not by a captain of the Navy but some other officer. What typically would be the rank of the person who might conduct such an inspection?
The inspections, as you're... As are being sort of characterized, are not common. On a submarine, a commanding officer may choose to conduct rounds of the submarine, where members who are effectively owners of the various compartment spaces on the submarines may report that compartment to the commanding officer for inspection. There may be cause for the commanding officer to fall the crew in to make presentations, but it's... There's also circumstances where rounds may be directed where the crew would fall in for an inspection. However, those cases are fairly rare.
And on land? Sometimes, although perhaps not often, there are parades of the kind that I described.
So submariners, as members of the Navy, will attend and participate in Anzac Day ceremonies, other commemorative events where they would be inspected. That's probably the most... That's the occurrence that comes to mind.
So it's not a regular part of naval life for submarins?
I think it's the same... It is likely the same frequency as for most of the rest of the fleet.
But does it ever happen in the absence of the public?
It's possible that the formal rounds are conducted, but I would say, from my experience, it is infrequent.
If defects in the presentation of a uniform, or perhaps the arrangement of a bunk or a bit of accommodation on the submarine are found, does the officer point them out on the spot?
If rounds were being conducted of the submarine, which I differentiate from a ceremonial presentation of the crew, so there's a difference between the two. Rounds of a submarine are conducted frequently in various levels of formality to determine that items are correctly stowed, that equipment is operating correctly, and that living spaces are in an orderly manner. I would expect that whoever was doing those rounds, which are done by various people at various levels on the submarine, that deficiencies would be pointed out to the appropriate person. That is a different context than ceremonial rounds, which I think, which is how I sort of understood the question originally.
And so the defects... Or the deficiencies would be pointed out on the spot, typically?
Generally, if the person was... The person responsible for the compartment or piece of equipment, work area, was present at the time.
Yes, and sometimes comrade... Immediate comrades would be present as well because it's pretty cramped?
It depends on the work area. It is fair to say that the submarines are cramped. Not all of the compartments on a submarine are continuously manned.
And on land, if there is a problem in a parade, not a public parade, not a ceremonial occasion, but if there's a an inspection of sailors or submariners and a defect in the uniform or some other matter was detected, it'd be pointed out on the spot in front of the colleagues or the other sailors.
It would depend on the nature of the issue. If the purpose of the parade was, or inspection, was to determine whether uniforms were in a good order for a commitment, then I think it's likely that a deficiency in the uniform would be pointed out, but not necessarily so.
And if it were pointed out, is it sometimes shouted out?
I have not observed that or are aware of such a case.
You're not aware of any such case in your naval career?
Not in the submarine force.
So I take it from that answer, you're aware of it occurring elsewhere in the Navy but not in the sub-force when you were in the sub-force?
So objection. Can we just clarify the question as to whether my learned friend is referring just to that particular circumstance where there is an inspection of uniforms for a ceremonial purpose, or referring to some other context, because the question about ever hearing shouting seems to not necessarily relate back to that circumstance. If that could be clarified for the witness, please.
Leaving aside ceremonial occasions, whenever there's an inspection of sailors lined up in a group in some way and a correction... and a correction is made of some kind, I take your evidence to be that you've not seen that done in a shouting way when you're in the subforce, but you have experienced it or seen it in other parts of the Navy. Is that right?
That is correct.
And rightly or wrongly, and we won't get into the what might be a debatable point, but the theory behind such things would include the need to maintain discipline, high standards, a certain degree of consistency across the unit in question.
The inspections that I'm characterizing from the question, I feel that they're not actually common occurrences in submarines.
I'm not asking about whether they're common. We're not even talking about submarines because you've said you've not seen what I've described in submarines, but you've seen it in the other parts of the Navy. My question is just about the purpose of correcting a sailor on some point on the spot in the presence of his or her comrades. The proposition is that a purpose of doing it is to maintain discipline, maintain standards, maintain a certain consistency across the unit. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm advised we're ready to roll with the display, and probably they were for a while waiting for a good question. So I'll try and ask a good question. Could we display the captain's statement in the redacted version? That's a copy of the first page of your statement, is it not, Captain?
Yes, it is.
And it doesn't have protected on the front of it, so it must not be the protected version. Would you agree?
I assume that to be the case.
I'll just ask a couple of questions about that. Do you... the full unredacted version of your statement does have printed on the top and bottom of every page in red capital letters the word protected, does it not?
Yes, it does.
That is, do you recognize, consistent with the style of dealing with classified information as prescribed by Commonwealth document or set of documents called the Protective Security Policy Framework? Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
And are you aware that one of the principles of the PSPF, as it's often called, is that the author of a document has the responsibility of thinking about whether any classified information is in the document?
Yes, I understand it to be the case.
And do you understand it to be the case that the author is the primary person responsible for determining what the classification of the document should be, and the author makes that decision?
I accept that is generally the case, that the author is best placed to determine the classification of a document. However, in many circumstances, there are other considerations that the author may not be aware of that warrant further scrutiny or restrictions being placed on that document to make it appropriate for use.
In such a circumstance, does the author... Are you talking about a situation where the author does not recognize that there's classified information, but someone else gets the document, recognizes a sensitivity, and decides that there should be a classification stamped on the document?
Yes, I am.
In the case of your statement, did you consider that it had in it material that was classified at the level of protected?
The statement was drafted at a level that I assessed to be at the official sensitive level with one minor edit to a section that we... I assessed was protected because it was drawn from a protected document and edited in such a way as it could be presented in official sensitive format.
And did you then... I can think of two possibilities as to the next step. Maybe there's a different possibility. Was the next step that you received advice from somebody that actually the document should be classified as protected? Or did you just get told that someone else had made a decision that it would be protected?
When my statement was submitted, it was reviewed, and the advice I received was with proposed reductions. And I accepted that to be the case.
Yes, well, that's the redactions, but who made the decision that your statement would be protected? You or someone else?
I'm not sure.
The implication of that, the necessary implication of that answer must be, is it not, that you didn't make the decision that this statement would be protected?
I don't recall making an explicit decision that this document was to be classified as protected. My submission was drafted along the lines that I thought was appropriate to be at the official sensitive level. As the submission was being reviewed, it was, I believe at that point in time, was classified protected and with advice that these were the appropriate reductions. And I accepted that to be the case.
I'll ask the operator to go to page nine of the statement and then to expand paragraph seventeen. And there's a heading above it, "Role and Function." You'll see a reference to operational commander in the third last line. Just who is the operational commander, or is that a category of people?
The operational commander is... That role can switch between various people in the organization. The operational commander by default is Commander Australian Fleet, my superior. However, there are circumstances when the submarine is being employed in an operational context where the operational command function may shift to another officer, and that would most likely be Chief of Joint Operations.
If we could go to page ten of the statement, the next page, and if it's possible to expand the headings D and Roman one and two and the paragraphs twenty-three to twenty-five, just so you... that may help you see it a little bit better, Captain. Does the Navy distinguish between direct command and administrative command?
Yes, in certain circumstances.
And who decides whether the circumstances exist to make that distinction?
Some command and control aspects are baselined in doctrine and directive, such as my delegations. There are circumstances where a shift in command and control requirements may need to take place, and those decisions are normally made at a more senior level to me, and I'll be informed accordingly.
Can you give us an example of some kind of decision or command that would be a direct command in one set of circumstances, but the same kind of command would be an administrative command in a different set of circumstances?
The term administrative command is most common in the submarine force context, is most commonly used to describe the relationship that the commanding officer of HMA Stirling has over personnel that are posted in resident units but are under his command.
Yes, but I asked a different question. My question asks you to give us an example of an actual command, and it can be hypothetical, I don't want a real command, but just give us an example of an actual command that would in one set of circumstances be administrative, but in another set of circumstances be direct command.
If I understand the terminology of direct command to be the person exercising command over personnel and the nature of their tasking and duties, I would say that submarine force headquarters is an example where command responsibilities are split between a direct command and an administrative command.
All right. If the... let's try... I'll just take a little step back. Typically, correct if I'm wrong, but typically a Collins submarine would be, when at sea, under the immediate command of a commander, and I mean the rank commander. Is that right?
That is correct.
And if the commander's on the bridge, the submarines have bridges in the way that ships do?
Yes, I do.
So if the commander is on the bridge and he tells whoever's at the helm... And let's just skip over my lack of knowledge of naval terminology, sorry, submariner terminology, but if the commander says to the person at the helm, "Turn to the starboard," is that a direct command or an administrative command?
That is a direct command function.
Now, you said that whether a command is an administrative command or a direct command depends on the circumstances. In what circumstances would a command to turn to the starboard be an administrative command?
It wouldn't.
Is there a... let's go back then because it may just been a matter of misunderstanding. Are there kinds of commands... so I withdraw that. That's a command that's always going to be a direct command, correct?
Yes, I agree.
Are there kinds of commands that are sometimes a direct command, sometimes an administrative command, and it just depends on what's happening?
In the context of a submarine, there is no differentiation between command responsibilities in that unit. The commanding officer is in command and is empowered to provide all direction, and that includes administrative command functions.
All right. Over whom do you have direct command?
I have direct command over the submarines within the force. However, I do not exercise any operational command or operational control functions of the submarines.
What's the difference between operational command and direct command?
Operational command, to paraphrase the doctrine as I understand it, is the ability to direct the tasking of a unit.
If a submarine goes out to sea, does it go from being under... Does the commander and the boat go from being under your command to being under the command of somebody else?
No.
But if it goes out to sea because the boat has been assigned to joint operations or some particular task force going to some place in the world, it might actually leave your command and go to some other command chain of command. Would that be right?
The way I would describe it is that I am in the chain of command for the submarines. That chain of command flows to Commander Australian Fleet, my direct superior, who exercises operational command of the fleet, including the submarines. The activities associated with those command and control functions, he delegates to maritime operations. And on a day-to-day basis, that is with my operational counterpart within submarine operations, who exercises that function. However, I am the direct report for the submarine commanding officers.
Your direct counterpart is a captain, is that right?
Yes.
And what's his or her command? You're the commander of subforce. What's the posting of this other captain?
Director, submarine operations.
When one of your submarines is sailing up the coast somewhere, can you give an order to the commander of the submarine to change direction?
No.
Can the other captain give such an order?
Yes.
Can you give any order to the commander while the ship is at sea?
No, it is no.
When the boat gets back to Stirling, let's say it's tied up at the dock, but the people are still on board, other than a command to go back to sea, let's put that out of the picture for a moment, can you give a command to the commander of the ship at that point?
Yes.
Can the other captain give a command at that point?
Yes.
What is... how do you define the difference between the commands? Firstly, who can give an... sorry, I'll just ask this. Which of you, if any, either of you, could give a command for the submarine to go back out to sea?
So the nature of how the submarines are tasked and programmed and controlled at sea is the purview of the director of submarine operations. In my role as providing technical and administrative... In my role as having technical control and administrative control of the units, I work through my counterpart to support that decision-making. When the submarine is alongside, I will generally have the lead on attending to whatever matters are required. And the roles are... then the director of submarine operations is supporting me, and when they're at sea, I'm supporting him, would be how I explain the arrangements.
But you've told us that you can't command the submarine to go out to sea. Pretty simple question, who can?
So my role is to...
Sorry, we've only got a limited amount of time. Who has authority to order? Who has authority to order a submarine to leave port?
The director of submarine operations.
Right, that's the other captain we were talking about.
Yes.
If he or she has not given that order, what kinds of order can he or she give to the people on the ship while it's tied up at Stirling?
The director of submarine operations, in exercising operational control of the fleet, of the submarine force, or the submarine fleet, provides the authorization for a submarine to go to sea and conduct its tasking.
So does that mean that the, the other captain could order the crew to get ready to go to sea? Or is that an order you would have to give?
Depends on the circumstances.
Right, and what circumstances could the other captain order your crew to get ready to go to sea?
If the submarine was at the appropriate level of readiness.
In whose judgment, whose judgment is that?
My responsibility is force generation of the submarines.
Sorry, so is it your judgment? So if you judge that the submarine's ready to go to sea, then the other captain can order it to go to sea, but not otherwise, is that it?
I think that is a, a fair characterization.
If the submarine is ready, but one of the sailors, sorry submariners, has leave commencing later that day, can that submariner be ordered by the other captain to go to sea?
Yes, I can agree.
You do not have a say, do you have a say in it other than influence? I mean, you couldn't countermand that order if you judged the sailor should have leave?
So in my capacity of having enduring technical control and administrative control, I would, my role is to ensure that the submarine's needs are attended to and that advice is provided to the operational commander as to what is or is not achievable when it comes to tasking that submarine.
But if, in your judgment, a sailor, let's be hypothetical about it, but a sailor's been under a lot of stress, has a family emergency and hasn't been home for quite a while, is owed leave, is about to commence leave, and you would personally choose to grant the leave? In the end, the operational commander can override your judgment and order the sailor to go out to sea with the rest of the crew, is that right?
Whether a sailor is landed for leave and whether a submarine needs to proceed to sea at short notice are not necessarily linked. And by that I mean, should a submarine need to respond at short notice for a tasking, there is processes in place that allow for due consideration of whether the requirement to land a member is important enough to land and whether we can, whether we would need to find a replacement or not. And, and I would go about supporting that process.
So once the due process has been followed, who actually decides whether a sailor or submariner gets leave?
The commanding officer is responsible for managing the leave requirements of the crew and the initial decision-making about what is practical. When there are circumstances when the commanding officer can, does not have the resources or ability to solve a specific problem, he would likely come to me and so I could either resolve the situation or, or seek a better outcome or provide an impact statement.
And the commanding officer in that answer is actually the commander of the specific individual submarine?
Yes.
He might, I think you said he, so we'll go with that example. He might accept the order from the operational captain, start up the motors and be ready to go, cancel the leave of the sailor. That's all within his authority?
Yes.
And in such a circumstance, he may not come for you, come to you at all, may consider the issue is resolved, correct?
Yes, that is possible.
The sailor, the individual submariner, might be rather displeased by that. Let's say she wants to challenge that decision, does she go to you or does she go to the operational captain?
In an instance where a crew member is dissatisfied with an outcome, I would expect them, and we encourage them, to use the chain of command on that submarine. Should there be a set of circumstances where that person feels they've exhausted their options through the chain of command on the submarine, I would be the next logical go-to for that member.
And you have authority to say, to overrule the submarine's commander and grant leave?
Yes.
And the other captain does not?
No.
If, to take a slightly different example, the ship sails and a problem then arises, are all problems initially to go through the chain of command on the boat, up to the level of the commander, but if there's a further need to escalate, does the sailor then go to the operational captain for all issues? Or do you have any role?
Matters related to personnel fall within my, my capacity as the, as having administrative control. I would expect that it is more pertinent or that those matters would reside with myself and my headquarters team. More appropriate, yes.
It might be more pertinent and more appropriate. In fact, they do reside with you, you have the authority?
Yes.
And can you make a decision to protect the sailor in some way that would interfere with the operational mission that has been set by the other captain?
Yes.
You could order the boat to return to the dock?
I would not order the...
I'm not asking whether you would, but could you?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Do you have power to order a submarine to return to HMA Stirling for the purpose of protecting the welfare of a sailor onboard?
Not directly.
In other words, that means you don't have the power, but you could lobby the other captain to make such a decision?
Yes.
And it's not, I'll withdraw that. To what extent do you think, would it be fair to say we've only touched, we've only really scratched the surface of all these different types of command, administrative, technical, there's also control, isn't there? There's technical control as well as command?
Yes.
And there's a few other terms that are in your statement. We've only scratched the surface of the complexities of this, would you agree?
Yes.
To what extent are you confident that the rank-and-file sailors understand who's got authority to do what in their welfare?
I think that, I assess that, that the arrangements in direct support of sailors sit largely within the unit. The divisional system and the chain of command of that unit, terminology such as operational command, administrative control and technical control are likely not concepts that the crew are aware of, but that they are aware of who they need to go to to when they have an issue.
The sub four includes not only the various ship and their crews, but a headquarters located at Stirling, is that correct?
Yes.
Are you the direct commander of the personnel in the headquarters?
Yes.
You paused for about, I don't know, 10, 10 to 30 seconds there. Is there some complexity to that question or issue?
Sorry, Jackson, I don't think that's necessary and the pause was about four seconds. I think the witness can gather his thoughts.
I think I'll press the question, was there some complexity to the issue I just raised?
Yes.
Tell us what it is.
All personnel that are not posted to a fleet unit, which includes submarines, are post, are, come under the command of CO, of the commanding officer of HMA Stirling, the base commander at Fleet Base West. Functional responsibility, direction of day-to-day tasking and, and focusing efforts resides with myself as one of several resident units that are on the base.
It's always convenient for you to ask questions.
In paragraph 40, you talk about your engagement with the workforce, including where you embark on submarines which have completed a docking and maintenance activity for their first dive to demonstrate confidence and assurance in the safety system and glean feedback on the maintenance period. That's the first of a number of examples. When you're on the boat in those circumstances, are you commanding or was the normal commander in command?
Commissioner, when I am embarked on a submarine, it is effectively as a, as a guest. There is no change to the command arrangements. The commanding officer retains command and I am, I am effectively a sea rider.
Thank you.
Oh, we're at paragraph 40. You'll see that you have to dedicate a lot of time and effort to focus on class-wide and longer-term issues, but frequently your focus has to be on short notice and unit-specific issues. How do you balance the tension between the urgent and the specific and the long term?
I try to focus my attention and that of my team based on prioritization and whilst our default, whilst we endeavor to try and focus on class-wide systemic issues and improvements, we are responsive to the, the matters of the day. And when they come up, if they are of, if they require an urgent response or if they are of significant, significant nature, we'll refocus our efforts to attend to that matter.
All right, I'll ask the operator to go back to page 10 of your statement and when we... Okay, we're shifting now to the period where you took over the command. And I'm interested to know broadly what you were told was coming your way. If we could just highlight or expand heading E and the two paragraphs under that, 26 and 27, you refer there to a verbal in-brief with the commander of the Australian fleet. How long did that verbal in-brief last?
I recall the verbal in-brief was likely between 30 minutes to one hour.
Was it done by telephone or in person or by some other method?
The in-brief was conducted by video conference.
And what, if anything, was said about suicide or suicidality issues?
I don't recall any reference being made to suicide or suicide behavior.
Thank you. Paragraph 27 refers to meetings with the Joint Health Command. How many meetings did you have prior to taking up your appointment or shortly after?
I recall a meeting with the Joint Health Command Garrison staff and I recall a meeting with the Senior Medical Advisor, Submarine Medicine, and one meeting with the Director of Navy Psychology West, all within a few weeks of, of assuming command.
You had previously commanded a submarine yourself as a commander?
Yes.
So you had some, some insight into the submarine world before you took up this appointment. But what did you learn from these meetings with health professionals about mental health issues specific to sub four?
My engagement with Navy Psychology West was largely to be appraised on the status of the Mental Health and Wellbeing Questionnaire, which is submarine-specific mental health surveillance program that was established in 2017. I was appraised on the progress on that and, and the requirements going into 2022. I don't recall the specific nature of my meeting with the Senior Medical Advisor for Submarine Medicine and the specifics are, I don't recall likely because I have reasonably frequent engagement with him and talk about a range of issues. And the meeting with Joint Health Command included the, the senior leadership from the Health Center, senior leadership from the Health Center. And I recall it provided a, a general appraisal on medical issues across the fleet, which included a, an understanding of deployability of personnel.
When you say, or you adverted to being appraised of progress with respect to the questionnaires, what was the, what kind of progress are we talking about? Administrative progress or something else?
So I recall that I was appraised on when I could expect the surveillance report for 2021 and also briefed on when each submarine would undergo their screening in 2022.
Would it be fair to say, sorry, were you, oh, sorry, did you discuss with them the results of prior questionnaires or other mental health issues?
I don't recall further specifics of this meeting at this time.
Did you speak with the Fleet Health Directorate?
I've had meetings with the Director of Fleet Health during my tenure of, as Commander Submarine Force. However, I did not have any specific engage with, with him around my handover date.
As at the time, approximately, give or take a few days or weeks, but around the time you took over as commander of the subforce, what was your understanding of the mental health issues that were specific to submarine life?
At or around the time I took over as Commander Submarine Force, I was, my, the advice I received was that the workforce was experiencing increased levels of non-deployability status and that... and that, consistent with wider fleet, particularly in Western Australia, there was a COVID-19 nexus with this. Both COVID-19 writ large, some of the border closure restrictions specific to Western Australia, they were presented as possible reasons for this increase.
I appreciate that, in a sense, West Australian-specific matters are particularly important for the submarine force. But what I'm angling at is the mental health issues that arise for submariners with or without a pandemic. Things that arise for them as distinct from patrol boats or tank squadrons. What, if any, specific mental health issues do you understand to arise for submariners?
Based on the meetings that I've referred to in my statement, I don't recall any submarine-specific mental health issues being presented at that time.
All right.
My understa-
So put those meetings to one side. You've now been in office, your current role, for more than a year, I think about eighteen months since, whenever. What's your understanding now? Have you discerned any particular mental health issues that are more prevalent with submariners? Greater risks for submariners? Anything like that?
My understanding of the mental health issues related to the submarine force, I can't easily compare it with wider fleet as to whether they are better or worse. But I do recognize the, that people who are, have experienced workplace health and safety incidents or workplace, have been involved in workplace behavior incidents can lead over time to a clinical diagnosis for mental health issues as a, as a sort of, as a theme.
Is there, I've been speaking as a complete layperson on this issue, but it might be thought that locking up fifty or sixty men and women in a long metal tube, which is essentially very small, and sending them where they can't see the sun for a long period of time, out to sea, that is, could have adverse mental health effects for some people. Might be claustrophobia or it might be something else. Are there, to your knowledge, any particular mental health risks against which you are guarding in your management of your workforce?
Yes.
What are they?
Well, submarines, submarine service is unique and not for everyone. They are complex machines where people are living in cramped conditions with austere, in austere living conditions, conducting arduous work and regularly not well-connected with their loved ones whilst at sea. That is the, the nature of the work. And that is a, that is not employment that is suited for everyone.
And does that kind of work, those problems lead to particular mental health issues that are distinct for submariners?
I don't have evidence to suggest that submarine service in and of itself leads to mental health issues. Incidents that happen on submarines or incidents that happen to submariners can be, can mean that it is, that continued submarine service can, can drive, can compound or exacerbate, exacerbate or degrade someone's mental health.
Is there any mechanism for, firstly, have, have any studies been done into the particular mental health risks and outcomes for submarine service that you know of?
Not that I can recall. Not that I'm currently aware of.
Do you monitor for signs of mental health deterioration in any particular way?
Yes, I do.
How do you go about that?
So through the mental health and well-being questionnaire process that's conducted for all the submarines.
Is that an annual questionnaire?
It is a process that involves a resilience brief being provided to the crew, each member of the crew filling out a questionnaire. And then based on analysis of that questionnaire, a screening interview being conducted by a Navy psychologist.
Is that an annual process?
Yes.
And do you get a report of the results of the process?
Yes.
Does that report identify individuals?
No.
What trends, if any, have you detected from those reports in your time at subforce as commander?
In the last two years, I've detected there's been an increase in the referral rate by Navy psychology. However, in my discussions with them, it is, we are unable to determine whether that is a result of people being more forthcoming in answering the questionnaires or people being subject to more incidents that induce mental stress or some other factor. But the referral rate did increase between the 2021 report and the 2022 report.
All right, we may come back to that in a bit of detail, but I'll just ask the operator to display a different document altogether. It's CBF 1001 001 001. Do you recognize this as a directive to you matter about the time you took over command of the submarine force? It required you to urgently illuminate and make recommendations to close capability gaps in order to maximize the Navy's warfighting lethality and readiness and said that a business-as-usual approach wouldn't do. And you were given a broad license. If we go over the page and expand paragraph four, just for your reference, Captain, did you make any recommend, or have you since then made any recommendations or bring matters or concerns to the attention of the fleet commander?
Yes.
Were any of those recommendations about the well-being of the workforce?
Yes.
What were those recommendations? Insofar as they're not protected or classified?
So attending to the, the well-being and sustainability of the submarine workforce is part of my core role. I've undertaken a series of measures since taking over the role that will either directly or indirectly improve, that'll close capability gaps, maximize warfighting capability and improve on the well-being of our personnel. And most of those I have enacted and advised him of what I'm doing or sought his support to make them happen.
Have you actually had to go to him for any decisions to make them happen?
Yes.
Insofar as you've given advice, sought decisions, kept him apprised of what's going on, is that done in some regular documentary form?
My normal engagement with the fleet commander is a verbal brief at a frequency of fortnight to monthly. I also participate in the, in a weekly sync with sick members of the fleet senior leadership team, where I can bring matters to his attention that are urgent. When there is a matter that meets his, his information requirements, I'll inform him at the time. And I'm also a member of the Fleet Command Board and Fleet Safety Environmental Boards, which are periodic boards to table issues that are longer-term or less urgent.
For more regular matters, is there some standard report that you put in on a regular basis that has this kind of material in it? Or is it just emails? Telephone calls?
A combination of.
I might get the operator to go back to your statement. At page eleven, paragraph twenty-nine, now being expanded with the heading, begin a discussion of access to workplace behavior survey data. Other parts of the ADF, not all parts, but some parts of the ADF have these workplace behavior surveys. Are you generally aware of their nature and all the reports they produce?
Yes, I have reviewed the workplace behavior reports as part of my preparation for this hearing.
And prior to that, you had not reviewed them, is that right?
That's correct.
You'll just see at twenty-nine, you say that no workplace behavior data surveys are conducted in Fleet Command. But at thirty, if we could just expand that picture, you say in paragraph thirty, I am aware that I can access workplace behavior surveys conducted by Defence People Group, but you don't use the data. Can you just explain, I'm not saying they're contradictory, but could you just delineate between the proposition there aren't any surveys in Fleet Command, but you have access to surveys conducted by DPG?
So Defence People Group conduct workplace behavior surveys that are, I find to be broad in nature. They're focused, for example, on Navy. And I have, I've been made aware that those surveys exist and I've reviewed them in the lead-up to preparing for this hearing. My answer to question twenty-nine is that I'm not aware of any specific workplace behavior surveys conducted within Fleet Command. However, I do receive reporting on the state of workplace behavior that's generated for the Fleet Command Board, and I review those reports accordingly.
And that's described at twenty-nine in particular in your statement?
Yes.
If we could just put twenty-nine back up, but apart from the couple of reports that we've got here in particular, there's a six-weekly workplace behavior report in the Fleet Kit, which goes to the Fleet Command Board. And there is also the Fleet Command Performance Assurance and Risk Management Group Report. And we'll come to those in a moment. But are there other such reports? We've heard about pulse surveys and other things. Are you, as commander of subforce, getting access to that kind of material?
The workplace behavior report that is generated for the Fleet Command Board is my primary reference point for understanding behavioral trends across fleet. Most of my understanding and focus for submarine force is on management and reporting of specific incidents as they come into the headquarters.
And so is the answer, apart from the material that's mentioned here, there are no regular or significant inputs of a survey kind feeding into your decision-making and your management of the subforce?
There are other reports such as the Mental Health Well-Being Questionnaires and Pulse Reports, which, when generated on occasion, can inform my, my view on things. But it is fair to say that they are the main documents that I use.
What, you've mentioned the Pulse Reports. Do you regularly, when you get them, review them or not?
The Pulse Reports that I have received or have been relevant to the submarine force during my tenure, I have reviewed.
And did anything come of those reviews? Did you make reforms, changes or anything like that?
My assessment of the recommendations at the time I used to inform on my thinking of initiatives that were taking place and confirm, confirm my understanding of the state of play within various workgroups. I don't recall seeing a recommendation in there that I felt I needed to enact directly that wasn't being sorted through other means.
Now that you've looked at the DPG behavior surveys, do you think that surveys of that kind, if made specific to subforce or maybe just Fleet Command, would be useful for commanders in your position?
They could be. I'm certainly interested in surveys that can be conducted, that are well-focused and also where results can be provided in, in short enough time to respond accordingly.
Correct if I'm wrong, but in part what you're saying is these reports could be useful if you get them in a timely way.
Yes, and if they're focused on questions or issues that I think are most pertinent.
Could I get the operator to display, to display a document? DBF 1001 002 0323. Can I just ask the operator to go to the first page? I'm sorry, I may have, which I believe is 1001 002 0323. Just having a technical, I may not have been clear. So the full number is CBF 1001 0002 0323. Is this an example of the workplace behavior reports that are given to the PARMG, which is the Performance Assurance and Risk Management Group at Fleet Command?
Yes.
And is this an example of one of the things that you get on a six-weekly basis and which you do make quite a bit of use of?
Yes.
All right, I'll just go back to your statement now. And we'll go back to paragraph twenty-nine on page eleven, which we were discussing. You say there that you use data from these reports to benchmark where SUBFOUR sits relative to other forces. Is it not a matter of comparing SUBFOUR's numbers with the numbers relating to other forces?
That is one of the things that I do.
What else do you do with them?
So I, I use the data in the reports to, as a, as a guide as to whether submarine force workplace behavior issues are proportionally higher or lower than the other forces. It is also, I use it to determine if the types of unacceptable behavior occurring in the submarine force are different than what is happening elsewhere in the fleet.
And what lessons have you gleaned from these reports and your reviews of them for the management of the fleet that you command?
My observations over my tenure in reviewing these reports is that the number of unacceptable behavior incidents within submarine force is about the same on proportion to other forces. about the same on proportion to other forces, and that the nature of those unacceptable behaviour issues are of the same categorisation proportionally as the remainder of fleet. By that, I mean the type of unacceptable behaviour.
Have you taken any actions as a result of reviewing these reports?
No.
All right, you say that these reports are limited to recorded unacceptable behaviour. Do they cover allegations that have not yet been resolved? Or just completed cases?
I would have to refer to the report to provide clarity on that.
All right. The essence of the report, and we won't, I'm not going to ask you for more detail than you can give properly, but these are reports about complaints that are coming in of unacceptable behaviour and they don't deal with individual cases, they consolidate them statistically so that you get some sense of the number of bullying complaints, the number of sexual assault complaints, or whatever the other categories might be, and across, allowing unit comparisons at that kind of level. Is that a fair, crude summary?
Yes, and I recall that there's sometimes a breakdown on whether those cases are based on, whether they're substantiated or not, and ranks and ages potentially of complainants and respondents.
You note that due to resource limitations, the data provided in the reports are not analysed against rank and a variety of other factors that you list. What are the resource limitations that prevent this more detailed analysis?
That would be resource limitations with respect to the, the office compiling that report.
Now, these reports go to the PARMG and, looks like the Fleet Executive, sorry, the Fleet Command Board. You sit on one or both of those boards?
I'm a member of the Fleet Command Board.
Are the reports prepared for that board, or is it merely copied in and they're really written for somebody else?
My understanding is those reports are prepared specifically for the board.
Has the board turned its mind to seeking improved resourcing so that these reports can attend to more detail?
Not that I'm aware of. However, my focus and best sources of information with respect to unacceptable behaviour management within the submarine force is based on the specific reporting of, of incidents as they occur. So I don't, I think, I assess I have sufficient fidelity over the complaints as they're managed internally, such that I wouldn't, I wouldn't add, I'm not necessarily seeking more information on, on the statistical, statistical summary across the fleet.
All right, well, just to finish off on these reports, you make the point that the data in these reports is sourced to a system called ComTrack. Does anybody cross-reference the data from ComTrack with data from other sources, either to check it or to see if there are aligning patterns that may be revealing of insights?
The alignment, not that I'm aware of.
All right, I'm sticking with paragraph 29, but I'll just remind you that at paragraph 138, you point out that you don't actually see the ComTrack reports that underlie these consolidated data reports. That is, you don't see individual case reports out of ComTrack, that's right, isn't it?
That's correct.
But you do say at paragraph 29 that you do have visibility of specific incident reporting. What is it that you actually observe?
In the context of an unacceptable behaviour complaint being made, the responsible command is required to raise a defence incident record. If the complaint is initiated within a submarine, that defence incident record will be submitted to the headquarters, where it will include reference to a contract case if it's been made, or it will indicate that one needs to be made. But it is the context provided in the defence incident record, where if I do not read it personally, I'll be appraised on it by my deputy or a chief of staff as to what the nature of the incident was, whether it meets a threshold to inform higher authorities, and any other additional actions or support that I need to do at the headquarters level.
So you say here in the statement, you find it more useful to monitor the progression of specific cases to ensure the appropriate process is being followed, and I think that echoes something you said a moment ago. Just to ask you some questions about that monitoring, do you monitor all of the cases within subforce?
I'm briefed on each, each incident that is, that is subject to a defence incident record being raised. There are some matters where I will be, need to be appraised on it frequently, because I either need to take actions or inform higher authorities. There are some incidents where I may just be briefed once to say, this has occurred, and either no follow-on action is required, or the matter is closed out. So it depends on the, the nature of the circumstances.
Well, so you're told about every case, is that right? Or just every case that warrants a DIR?
The headquarters is informed of an incident normally through receiving a defence incident record. So I think it's, it's, any incident where a DIR is raised, I would be appraised of.
Does that mean you're told about every single allegation of unacceptable behaviour?
Not necessarily.
Just the more serious ones?
I'd expect to be informed of anything that's deemed serious, but the, the nature of how unacceptable behaviour complaints are raised, noting that a complaint can be raised by, and to any, by anyone in any place, at any time, in any format, means that, and depending on who the complainant and respondent is, I may not necessarily be informed of it immediately. And depending on the movement of those complainants and respondents between commands, that will dictate the amount of information I might have on a matter.
Who actually decides whether you get told of a particular matter?
I would expect that incidents that are occurring within a submarine.
Sorry, not what you expect. Who decides?
It depends on the nature of the incident, but the commanding officer primarily is responsible for external reporting of matters.
Would you expect that the commanding officer would know of all matters, and he or she would decide whether it's serious enough to tell you?
As a general statement, that is correct. However, there's specific direction provided to the submarines with respect to raising defence incident records when an unacceptable behaviour complaint has been made. As such, the, a DIR should land with the headquarters, and if I do not read it personally, the deputy or the chief of staff will bring it to my attention, either through a verbal brief or by submitting the DIR for my review.
Is the fact that you are monitoring specific cases one reason that you don't monitor other sources of information, some of which we've mentioned?
I assess that my, my, my focus and attention is best placed on unacceptable behaviour complaints that have a nexus with the submarine force.
What kinds of processes are covered by your statement here that you monitor the progression of specific cases? Suppose court martial might, court naval might be one, but I guess it's rare, but what other processes are you monitoring?
When an unacceptable behaviour complaint is made, the, the, the decision-maker, who is normally the commanding officer, needs to, may need to direct fact-finding to occur. Depending on the circumstances, it may be appropriate that fact-finder is sourced from somewhere external to the submarine, in which case the headquarters will be involved. Once the commanding officer makes a decision as to whether a complaint is substantiated or not, the human resources team within the headquarters may support finalisation of documents to resolve that matter. Members of the headquarters can support the submarines in entering matters into ComTrack, and the, I will support the, the commanding officer with respect to any follow-on administrative action that may be required, and if necessary, serve as a decision-maker in the event of an administrative sanction. So there's a range of, there's a range of ways that I will be either personally involved, or my staff will be involved in a matter.
The individual submarine commander is typically a significant actor or player in these processes, is that right?
Yes.
When you are apprised of the progression of a case, how is that done? Orally, in writing, or in some other way?
Through a range of measures, depending on the circumstances.
What, what are the main examples within that range?
A phone call from the commanding officer if the matter is urgent in nature, potentially an email, a DIR as the, as the formal record to appraise the chain of command through Navy as to what has occurred and what needs to occur, would be the main forms of communication, as well as the, the commanding officer may appraise a member of my staff, who will then come and brief me if necessary.
All right, the emails that you mentioned typically come from the commanding officer?
Yes.
The DIRs are typically signed off or countersigned or in some way endorsed by the commanding officer?
Yes.
The, I think that covers it. Basically, the commanding officer is the source of your information when you are monitoring the progress of these cases? Typically?
Typically.
When you are being, oh, sorry, the deputy com-sub, is that your deputy, deputy commander of the submarine force, is that the correct interpretation?
Yes.
Is the deputy com-sub ever a significant player in these processes?
Yes.
When you are apprised by a commanding officer or the deputy com-sub of the way in which the process is being administered, what assurance do you have that the report you're getting is accurate?
I'll get my assurance that the information is accurate through my discussion with the person informing me. So in some instances, I will question them, and in some instances, I'll, I'll, I'll get them to check that they're using the relevant policy. And sometimes I, I seek advice from members of my staff who have expertise in these matters to confirm that we're, we are dealing with a matter in an appropriate way.
Overnight, did you or your team discover that your original statement had omitted reference to several unacceptable behaviour complaints?
We did not discover that last night.
Okay, so after the signing of the main statement, did you make, you or someone make that discovery?
Yes.
And that led to the provision of a supplementary statement last night?
Yes.
Could you just take us through the, broadly, I'm not asking for individual case details or anything like that, but how many were in your original statement, how many additional ones did you find? Start with that.
I'll just refer to my statement. The numbers provided in my statement were based on a, a pool of data from ComTrack conducted by Defence People Group. That indicated a, a number of complaints within subforce as three for 2022 and three for 2021. When that data was presented, it was, did not match with my understanding of the number of unacceptable behaviour complaints that had a nexus with submarine force. Through a review of all defence incident records over 2021 and 2022, we're able to ascertain there were seven unacceptable behaviour complaints in 2021, and 11 unacceptable behaviour complaints in 2022.
So you yourself spotted the fact that the numbers in the statement were too small?
I received assistance from my chief of staff in, in correlating and coordinating the data for my statement. It was a discussion point between us that the numbers appeared to be lower than what we thought, and as such, we conducted a follow-on review in order to provide the most thorough assessment of what we assessed. The question was trying to glean.
Was that discussion, which you mentioned, you or your chief of staff mentioned that the numbers were lower than expected, before or after you signed your statement?
It was around the time of submission of the statement. I did not formally, I don't recall signing the statement, but it was around the time of submission.
All right. And when did the process of reviewing all the DIRs, which led to the finding of more cases, occur?
Shortly thereafter.
So April sometime?
We initiated the review shortly, shortly after we had that conversation, so yes, April sounds accurate.
The statement stated 21 April. Did you, at that time, before commencing the review, but when you had a suspicion that the information in the statement wasn't accurate, did you alert anybody in the Commonwealth team before this Royal Commission?
Yes.
And was that alerting before the process of pulling out DIRs and doing the review commenced?
Yes.
Who did that review?
The review was conducted by the, led by the chief of staff within submarine force headquarters, supported by some additional personnel to do the data, the data searching.
And can you give us an explanation of the discrepancy? Why wasn't that the accurate data wasn't found the first, in the first place?
The data in the report is not necessarily inaccurate. The, the, the nature of how the data was gleaned from ComTrack by an, by an external authority, presented the numbers that are in the statement. There are, based on the nature of how unacceptable behaviour is reported and managed, being that a complaint can be made by anyone, to anyone else, at any time, any place. There's the, the fact that respondents and complainants may not be submariners, they may be within the submarine force, but not submariners, they could be submariners that are posted to other units. The, the, the position that I took was to The, the, the position that I took was to provide the most holistic, holistic view of complaints that we had managed within the force over the last two, two years, which is not necessarily, which has gleaned those different, different results.
Does that mean you just changed your mind as to what the question was asking you? Or does it mean something else?
My position, my, my assessment was that it would be in the best interest to provide the best assessment of information in the time available. In the time available to meet the report submission dates, we use the DPG data, which was not, which, which doesn't necessarily meant it was wrong, but we needed time to try and tease out as to what, which bits correlated and which didn't. As such, I, but I, I believe that it was in the best interest to provide the most holistic, most holistic view of unacceptable behaviour in the last two years as, as a dataset, as, as what I assess is the most coherent dataset.
Well, does, does sub-four headquarters keep its own records of unacceptable complaint, behaviour complaints?
We keep a record of all incidents that have a defence incident record attached to them, and that is our general source of data for tracking and management of incident reporting.
Why didn't you go to that repository of information? Why did you go to DPG, DPG instead?
So the comtrack is the database that captures unacceptable behaviour reporting. We have the ability to enter information into comtrack, but don't currently have the means to review the data that is in there. So whilst anyone can make an entry, the ability to conduct a data poll is not something we have the ability to do. So we seek, to answer this question, we needed to seek external assistance, and that was DPG.
So you do keep the data in your own headquarters. The data end up being 11 cases in 2022 and seven in 2021. We're not talking millions of records that need a supercomputer to crunch the numbers, less than a dozen. What was the obstacle that prevented you referring, or if it wasn't an obstacle, what was the reason for not referring to your own headquarter records on this issue?
I recall in compiling the statement that the, the data for questions of this nature was most appropriately provided from a central source.
Why did you form that view? Because it turned out to be wrong, didn't it?
I don't necessarily think that the information is wrong as it's presented. I just assess that however the data search was done, that, that is the results that were gleaned from that database.
Is it the case that you thought that in all likelihood, the records kept in your headquarters would be less reliable than the records you are getting from comtrack?
Can you repeat the question?
Was a reason for not relying or at least consulting your own records that you did not have confidence that they would be accurate compared with the comtrack records?
Guiding our decision-making with respect to compiling this notice was meeting the desired timeframe. The conversation was along the lines that DPG had the available, we're best placed to conduct a search of comtrack, which is our tool for capturing unacceptable behaviour. And, and that was the, that was the, so that was the approach that we took.
And when you took that approach, you quickly spotted the likelihood that the numbers were understated? You told someone about it?
Objection. The witness has said he thought the numbers were accurate, so I think that's misstating his evidence.
Thought that the number was too-
Perhaps you can rephrase the question?
Yes, I will. You thought that the number, being a small number, didn't have, wasn't reflective of the most appropriate approach to answering the question, wasn't sufficiently holistic? And I'll, I'll withdraw the question and ask another one completely. Just where in your office or suite of offices do you keep the data locally?
The data is stored electronically.
On a mainframe in Canberra or a computer that's located in your headquarters?
The data is stored in the Defence Records Management System, which is known as objective, which is the corporate, the corporate file for, for defence.
Do you agree that the numbers of actual complaints formally made understate the true extent of unacceptable behaviour?
So you can finally have the comtrack or to the local sources as well?
I'm not talking about, thank you, Commissioner, let me rephrase it in light of that guidance. The figures that you've provided overnight are based on DIRs, is that correct?
Yes.
They are reports of incidents, relevantly for present purposes, incidents of unacceptable behaviour, correct?
Yes.
They reflect incidents that have actually been the subject of a complaint or some other form of report in an official way?
Yes.
And they reflect a level of seriousness, I'm not saying very high or very low, but a, a certain level, such that very minor matters wouldn't be picked up because they're resolved promptly by a section commander or whatever. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
But the, a feature of the source material from which you've drawn the figures overnight is that there was an actual formal report by someone?
Yes.
From your examination of them, that someone would typically be a person making a complaint that something wrong occurred, correct?
A complaint can be initiated by the person who is, feels subject to unacceptable behaviour. It could also be initiated by command who has observed or has reason to believe that unacceptable behaviour has taken place.
Well, you monitor these, each of these cases to some degree. Speaking broadly, which is the more common way in which these things are initiated? The person who's the subject of the bad behaviour or command initiation? And there might be a third possibility, some other sailor or submariner saw something and reported it up.
So from my review of the cases, the majority of unacceptable behaviour is initiated by the complainant.
And is the next most common the commander or a colleague intervening in a protective way?
Based on the sample size of the, the 18 cases over 21 and 2022, beyond what, beyond the complainant being the source of the complaint, I don't think there is a, I don't assess there is a discernible trend.
Well, I really wasn't asking about trends. There are three sources, commanders, the, I'll call it the victim just for clarity, just for a moment, commander, victim or comrade of the victim. Which of the latter two, commander or comrade, is the greater source of these DIRs in origin?
My best assessment is that over the 18 cases that I've managed or that have been managed by submarine force in 2021 and 2022, majority have been initiated by the complainant. Some of them had been, I think approximately two have been command initiated. One complaint was an anonymous complainant who observed unacceptable behaviour and one case was where the respondent reported themselves. So it's a, it is a mix of sort of one or two different methods across the dataset.
Do you agree that the number of matters that do become the subject of a report, whichever of the four categories you've just mentioned, is not equal to the number of actual incidents of unacceptable behaviour in sub-force in the last two years?
I can't speak to, I, I can't speak to what I'm not, it's difficult to make that comparison. I'm aware of the unacceptable behaviour complaints that have been raised. It is, it is possible that there are other, that unacceptable behaviour has taken place that hasn't been reported. I acknowledge that is a possibility.
You acknowledge it as a probability?
I don't have data either way to suggest if it's a possible or probable, so I can't-
No, so because you haven't got data, I'm asking you to apply your experience, which is not inconsiderable, your seniority, which with respect would reflect some judgment and ability and so on, and common sense. Applying those three things, do you not conclude that in all probability, the number of incidents of unacceptable behaviour is greater than the number of incidents that are actually reported?
My view is that would be the case.
Do you agree that a fundamental purpose and benefit of workplace behaviour surveys of whatever kind and similar exercises is that they detect matters that are not otherwise reported? Because there are mechanisms for confidentially mentioning problems without reporting it, and in particular, unacceptable behaviour. Do you agree that that's a benefit of workplace behaviour surveys and similar kinds of exercises?
Yes.
And they get a bit closer to revealing the true extent of the problems, don't they? Potentially, at least potentially?
Yes.
And a comparison of such data from surveys and the like with actual complaints could also give some indication of the extent to which the personnel feel inhibited from making a complaint or a report of bad conduct, correct?
Yes.
Do you have some other method that we've not yet touched on to address the discrepancy between official complaint numbers and the probable greater, probably greater true extent of bad behaviour?
Yes.
What, what is it?
Well, on a personal capacity, I engage with the crews directly and get a sense of how things are onboard the submarine. I do this when I embark, when the submarines are at sea, and I do it alongside. I host safety conversations with crews to have frank exchanges about various issues. And members of my headquarters are engaged at all levels with the submarine crews, and that helps inform my view as to whether there are issues on a particular submarine that are not being reported through formal means and allow me the opportunity to do something about it.
I'll ask the operator to bring up the document DEF 1169 001 0052. While that's happening, Captain, how often do you meet individually with sailors in private to check in on their concerns and so on? If at all?
The main one-on-one engagement I have with sailors is in my role of interviewing them as part of their transition process. I am available for a one-on-one discussion with sailors if need be, but that is, that rarely occurs. And other than that, it's circumstantial discussions on a, on an opportunity basis when I am on the submarines or moving around the base.
Just have a look at this redacted minute. We've taken some names away, but it's a one-page document from a captain of the Royal Navy, so very distinguished. Just look at it, you may have had a chance to look at this before, but have a look at it again. I do not suggest that this is a document specific about sub-force, but do you see that it is a list of reasons why members of the ADF don't always make a complaint or report of unacceptable behaviour?
Yes.
Do you accept that these are factors that may, from time to time, have application to members of sub-force, even if you personally don't know about it happening?
My review of those reasons, I, I, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't apply in the submarine force.
Is it not with respect wholly inadequate to try and monitor the culture of your organisation, particularly with respect to unacceptable behaviour, simply to monitor the procedural progress of reported cases? And all your, and your main source of information is a report from the very person you're monitoring? Now, to just break that up, because it's a complicated thing, we've, you've let us know that your main approach to monitoring the issue of unacceptable behaviour in sub-four is not to look at broader survey data where available, but there are two things that have really emerged. Monitoring the proper progress of individual reported cases and secondly, walking the boards, having those subsafe meetings with groups of sailors, but not with individuals. And what I suggest to you is that that's just not an adequate approach to finding out how much unacceptable behaviour is going on in a command. What would your comment be?
So I just have an objection to one small aspect of the question. It was put that the captain's main approach is by looking at specific incidents, whereas his evidence was simply that it was useful. I think that's actually quite important because it's been put to him as an assumption in the question.
You might need to clarify that assumption if you rely on.
Yes.
Mr Singleton?
Thank you, Commissioner. Paragraph 29 of your statement is the description that you give. Let me, let's, let's, let's open it up a little bit, you've heard the objection. What do you consider to be the main way that you monitor and check for unacceptable behaviour in your command?
So my view on the management of incidents is related to things that have occurred. So when an incident has been, when a complaint has been made and it's being managed, my focus is generally on attending or focusing my attention and that of the headquarters in dealing with that matter or assisting in dealing with that matter to the best extent possible. And I feel that my engagement on those matters is potentially a better representation than broader statistics. Reducing or removing unacceptable behaviour in the workforce is an ongoing effort for me. And I'm not satisfied that we, we have done enough because there is no acceptable level of unacceptable behaviour. I do this through education, ensuring that crews conduct their mandatory awareness training in unacceptable behaviour and workplace behaviour. I, I do it by reviewing mental health and wellbeing questionnaires and engagement with stakeholders that are involved with the submarine as well as the crew itself.
I know at the time we'd take a break at this time.
Thank you, Mr Singleton. Captain, we do need to break. We've been going for two hours and transcription purposes, they need to have a break. So we'll adjourn for 15 minutes and return.
All rise. The Royal Commission is adjourned for 15 minutes. The Royal Commission is resumed. Please be seated.
Thank you, Mr Singleton.
Thank you, Commissioners. Can I ask the operator to bring up the document CBF 1001 002 0395? Are you concerned that supervisors are perpetrating unacceptable behaviour against people under their command?
There have been examples of unacceptable behaviour within the submarine.
There have been examples of unacceptable behaviour within the submarine force in the last two years, where the complainant has assessed that they were subject to unreasonable conduct from their supervisor or supervisors.
I might just get the operator to expand the expansion to cover 15 as well, just in case it helps the witness. It's a particular problem on the submarine compared with many other contexts because of the isolation of those on board. Would you agree?
Not necessarily.
Does that mean it is not always so, but it is sometimes the case that the problem can be more acute on a submarine?
A situation where a person feels that they are subject to unacceptable behaviour by their supervisor. The context of whether it's on a submarine or another fleet unit, I see as relatively comparable.
Is it the case that submarines have less communication with land than surface vessels?
Yes, that is a true statement.
Do you have any concerns about the culture within Sub-4 arising from this reporting here?
While there is unacceptable behaviour occurring within submarine force, I won't be satisfied until it's no longer occurring. And will continue to focus my efforts to reduce it as much as I can.
What has been the most recent focusing of your efforts?
Recent direction to the submarine commanding officers from the headquarters, reiterating the process of reporting to ensure that we've got an accurate picture and that to support ongoing management would be my most recent action in this regard.
I'll ask the operator to come back to your statement. And if we can go to page 11. And on that page, there's a heading G and paragraph 31. Just what is DEHS? Defence eHealth system. Is that a computer system?
It is, I understand it is software that is resident on the defence network to support health management of personnel.
Who does the searching of the system that you mentioned here?
My understanding is that access to the Defence eHealth system would be only to those within the health community and with a requisite need to know.
Trend data actually provided to Fleet Command?
I assess that's accurate insofar as it's not available for reporting to personnel outside the health system. There are health personnel who work within Fleet Command who may have access to that. But because it is medical information, that would not be shared outside of the health community to preserve the requisite confidentiality requirements inherent in medical information.
I'm sorry. Trend data, not individual cases, trend data actually provided to the Fleet Command?
That is my understanding.
What use do you make of the data in your sub-force? If any?
I don't have access to information related to suicide or suicidality within submarine force unless there was an incident on a submarine where that incident was, the information would flow through the headquarters.
In effect, that's information flowing from the submarine to the headquarters, not coming from health or somewhere else to the headquarters?
Yes.
Now, the reason you say here you don't have access to trend data is to ensure the confidentiality of medical records. But is the case, is it not, that trend data can be compiled in a way that does not expose any individual information?
Yes, that's possible.
Are you aware of any reason other than what you've got here, and it's now in yellow? Do you have any other reason why you don't get access to this data? Or is it, or sorry, do you have the right to get access if you wanted it or not?
I do not have a requirement or a... It's not within my remit to access clinical information for people.
I'm not asking about clinical information. We're talking about trend data here. Amalgamated statistics that give an overall trend of some systemic or broader based issue that may be emerging in your command or another command, of course. Is it the case that you could get access to these trend data or not?
So objection. Just a clarification that paragraph 31 refers to trend data by diagnosis. So it isn't the sort of general information. But if the question relates to general information, I think that should be put. But if it is specific to diagnosis, then I think it isn't in the nature of especially general information concerning the submarine force. Right, please?
Do you accept that? Or do you wish to clarify the question?
I'll come back to ask one more first.
Yes.
With respect, the objection didn't relate to the question that was actually asked. But trend, it says, just a couple of sentences earlier, you see, Captain, it says, "Trend data by diagnosis is not held within Fleet Command. However, this may be provided by Joint Health Command through searching DEHS, by diagnosis and presentation. To whom may these data be provided?"
I'm not sure who would be entitled to such information.
This is your statement. You wrote it or authorised it. You say that the data may be provided by Joint Health Command. I'm asking to whom it may be provided.
It could be provided on request. I have not made an explicit request for that data, so I don't know who it specifically could be provided to. But Joint Health Command would have that information resident within the organisation.
I was assuming it could be provided to someone. Your understanding is you could ask for these data? And providing it didn't reveal anything about individuals, it could be provided?
Yes, I think that's theoretically possible without having pursued a request myself into that data.
And do you accept that this sort of data could be very important information for you to have in discharging your responsibility to look after the welfare of the submariners in your sub-force?
Yes.
I'll ask the operator, in the statement, if we could just go to page 22 and highlight paragraphs 38 and 39. You say that you utilise some of the personnel of a submarine undergoing major maintenance to fulfil personnel deficiencies in some other submarine, but not all of them. What do those who are not being utilised in this way do?
Personnel that are assigned to a crew that is in a maintenance period would be conducting tasks on that submarine or conducting tasks relevant to maintenance or preparing for the next operating cycle.
Is the essence of it, speaking generally, and there may be individual differences, but those... The crew of a submarine under maintenance would typically be working on the maintenance, but some of them might be taken to staff a boat going to sea?
Broadly speaking, that's an accurate characterisation.
And do you see that there is a risk of burnout if such utilisations are not managed appropriately? What is the appropriate way to manage? What techniques have you got?
We apply the fleet-specific policies which are designed to maintain a sustainable level of output from our personnel. One of those tools is Separated Service Threshold, which measures the amount of time that a person is away from their home place. That is a measurable metric that can be used to manage the tempo of a person and ensure the sustainability of them.
Is family factored into the calculations? And if so, how?
The measure of Separated Service Threshold is based on the amount of, number of nights that a person is not able to be at their home residence due to work reasons, whether that be sea service, business travel, training requirements and so on. It does not necessarily link to the time spent with family because in some situations, members' family may not reside in the posting location by choice.
Is high tempo a factor that increases the risk of burnout?
My view is that over time, if we demand too much of our people over a long period of time, it can result in burnout.
And how do you draw the line of where is too much? And how do you measure whether someone's got to that line?
So burnout, as I understand it, is not an easily quantifiable issue. We have, along with Separated Service Threshold, there are other tools within Navy to try and keep the capability sustainable. That includes the scheduling of the submarines. That includes the amount of time we allocate to trials and maintenance periods to ensure or to prevent too much occurring at any one time. So I can't point to a specific way we manage burnout, but via trying to set the conditions for sustainable employment of the submarine and its crew, I think we can reduce the chances that people will burn out. And then we rely on effective leadership and management at all levels to identify personnel who are potentially at risk of burnout or need a break.
I take it that's a yes. Tempo is a factor?
Yes.
Objection. That wasn't the question. It was how do you measure when somebody has got to burnout?
Yes, I would, yes.
Can you draw the line with the question, where is too much?
Yes, I accept that.
How do you measure whether someone has got to their line? Okay.
Would you say that the risk of burnout has increased in the last three years? Two years, I think, is close to your period?
Because it is a, I can't give an answer, an accurate representation of that because it's not a metric we can measure easily.
Operator, could you display, if possible, just on the private setting, just the screens in the room rather than publicly? And send a message if it can't be done. I'll give you the number, DEF 11590020518. Commissioners, to keep you in the loop, we've been told today of confidentiality claims over this document. So I'm proceeding with a little extra caution till we know the scope of those claims. What it is, and I'll describe what it is in case it's not technically possible to get it up on your screen. A pulse report in respect of submariner warfare officers. And here's a, hopefully innocuous page from it. May 2020 is the date, not a long time into your tenure. Do you recognise the document?
Yes.
I won't get the operator to go through the pages, but it says in this... Actually, we got the private, are we in the private setting? We are. Could we go to the page with paragraphs three, four, five and six on it? In paragraph three, it states that "One in five members indicated either experiencing or approaching burnout in their current work role." Now, accepting that burnout is not a precisely measurable concept, is this not, is survey data, questionnaire data, something that could be the best or among one of the better ways of trying to measure the risk?
I agree. It provides a characterisation of a situation in certain contexts.
What's the current situation, as best you can judge, about the risk? One in three back a couple of years ago in this report, sorry, one in five. Think it's got better or worse?
I think I would know that information if we conducted a similar poll survey using the same cohort, which hasn't occurred since that time.
What I suggest is that even without being able to measure it through a survey, that one can in an organisation get a general sense of whether people are getting busier, more frantic, under greater stress or not. We've heard in non-maritime contexts, but in the inquiry, that there have been COVID assist operations, flood assists, bushfire assists and ordinary operations, all increasing the tempo and the stress across the ADF. Have you any reason to think that the situation in respect of burnout is improving in Sub-4 in the last couple of years?
It's difficult for me to make a broad statement on that. I acknowledge there are personnel within the force that are working... There's personnel in the force that are working too hard and have done too much. And where that's the case, I want to support an outcome that keeps the workforce as sustainable as possible. And I work on adjusting structures and processes to ensure sustainable outcome. And individual cases for commands to manage. And if they don't have the resources or options at their disposal, that they come to me so I can assist them in managing individuals to reduce the likelihood of burnout.
Do you agree that the better approach, out of the two I'm going to give you, the better approach would be to assume that things are getting worse unless you've got a good reason to the contrary?
My approach is to focus my attention and my team's attention on class-wide structures and processes in order to set the conditions for sustainable employment of our people. So in a way, I accept... So in a way, I accept that we can do better and that's what I'm focused on doing.
Commissioners, I'm conscious of having eaten some of your time. Upon my undertaking to be briefer in the confidential session, might I have five more minutes to look at one more document?
Certainly, go ahead.
Thank you. Operator, could I ask you to bring up DEF 1159 00020813? Do you recognise this report from November 2022?
Yes.
We were going to do some fancy things of putting two documents side by side, but we're going to be quicker. This report can be compared with a similar report from March 2019. Do you, have you undertaken that exercise of comparing this report and its predecessor?
I reviewed all the mental health programme and deployment questionnaire surveillance reports in the lead up to this hearing sequentially.
But not at an earlier time? Would that be fair?
Yes.
It appears, based on the two reports, that crew morale has significantly worsened in the intervening period. Do you have any insights into why that would emerge in these reports?
What I'm cognisant of, when these, when these survey questionnaires are undertaken, is the context of what is going on on a particular submarine or submarines at the time. So there can be circumstances as to when, for example, a survey is conducted before a deployment or after a deployment, which could exacerbate certain factors.
And I suppose if all of the submarines were being deployed at the same time so that that factor didn't cancel out, that might be relevant. Have you looked into it? Is that the, is that the reason for this reportedly worsening morale? Or is it merely a hypothetical possibility?
Request you repeat the question?
You've suggested that there may be factors such as whether the survey was conducted before or after the sailing of the submarine. It sounded like that's a hypothetical possibility, but you haven't actually checked whether the, what the sailing routine was with respect to the timing of these reports. Is that right? You've given a possible explanation, but not an actual explanation.
The reports are surveyed across the fleet at varying times of the year and they're conducted on a boat-by-boat basis. The annual report which I received is a, condenses the the results of all submarine questionnaires.
Sorry, with respect to, I've got very limited time left, which is entirely my fault, but I was asking you about the meaning of your previous answer. I'm not asking about the reports. You gave, I asked you, in effect, if you can give any explanation for why morale has reportedly got worse in the period between these two reports. And you gave an answer that referred to there being multiple possible factors, including whether the survey was done before or after a ship had recently sailed and so on. I'm suggesting to you that your answer was referring to mere hypothetical possible explanations, that you haven't actually looked into it and you haven't actually found out why. Is that the case?
Each time I've received, I've received one of these reports in my tenure, specifically the report dated November 2022. And part of receiving that report is conducting a verbal debrief with Navy psychology who compiled the report to discuss the general themes.
You, no, it's, sorry. Would morale be a little bit higher or lower before a submarine goes out to sea?
Morale such as it can be quantified is a function of a variety of, a variety of factors and I can't specifically associate.
You're the one who told us a few moments ago that a possible explanation for the morale figures is that the surveys may have had a relationship in time with the timing of the sailing of the boat.
Objection, the reference was to deployments, not just simply going out to sea, which might encompass going out for a night. I think if the question could be asked specifically, the witness is going to be in a better position to answer.
Mrs Singleton?
If that was the precise answer, I accept it. Deployments. Forget about the sailing, that's one kind of deployment, but I take it there are others? Is that right?
The submarines will conduct deployments, which involves going to sea for generally a prolonged, being away from home port for a prolonged period of time.
What other kinds of deployments are there?
The submarines will also proceed to sea for local activities which may generally involve being at sea for a week or two in a stint.
Okay. A little while ago, you told us that a possible reason why morale has reportedly fallen between 2019 and November, sorry, and 2022 was that the survey came just before or just after a deployment. Now you tell us that you can't say whether being just before or just after a deployment would increase or decrease morale. Is it the case that you have no solid grounds for thinking that the timing of a deployment relative to the timing of the survey is the explanation for the decline in crew morale?
My view is that a clear comparison in morale between three, between 2019 and 2022 would be clear if we surveyed the same, the whole force in a single, in the operating, working in the same context. And the, but the actual way the surveys are conducted are by surveying each individual unit at varying times over the years, over the year. So.
The bottom line is that you have not looked into why the morale has reportedly fallen and you don't know why, correct?
Based on the assessment, I, I've not undertaken any specific investigation based on the characterization that morale has fallen between those two reports.
All right, I'll just mention two other statistics in a broad way. There's been an increase in members feeling, between these two reports, an increase in members feeling exposed to potentially traumatic events. With a quarter in 2022, a quarter of the members felt that they were in danger of being injured at some point. Is it the case that you have not looked into why those figures may have increased to that level and therefore you do not actually know?
Yes, I have looked into those figures.
Right. When did you look into that particular figure?
When I reviewed the report on presentation.
And have you identified a reason for that increase and that apparently large proportion?
So my understanding, based on knowledge of the survey, is the way the question is asked is includes, is not a work-specific question. It is asking whether people had felt endangered in any situation, whether that be a motor vehicle accident or fear of their safety in flying in a plane in the last 12 months. That being said, I acknowledge that that is concerning that our workforce are indicating that irrespective of the context. And that is why I spend a large amount of my effort working with all stakeholders to reduce the likelihood or prevent incidents from happening that may cause concern amongst the workforce that their safety is in danger.
Thank you. I'm sure I took at least all of the time you gave me in extension. I'll meet my promise about later on. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Mrs Singleton. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Captain. I just wanted to go back to ask a few questions. One was around, I think you acknowledged that it's likely that the unacceptable behaviour incidents are under-reported. Am I correct?
Commissioner, I don't necessarily think that people are aware of it and not reporting it. I think there's cases where complainants are not reporting it in the first place.
Sorry, that's, yes, that's what I meant to convey. I'm sorry if I didn't convey that. So complainants may not be making a report of an incident of unacceptable behaviour. And Mr Singleton put up a list of potential reasons acknowledged by defence. They were things to do with stigma, to do with rank, to do with circumstances, to do with another more senior person being there and observing it. Nothing was done. There was a whole host of them. So do you have any sense? And I accept this is a difficult question, but do you have any sense of to what extent it may be not being reported by the complainant?
So Commissioner, I, my best sense of that is that in the unacceptable behaviour complaints we have managed, some of those have, some of those complaints have emanated down track through other means, such as through an individual welfare board or the complaint has been raised due to unrelated fact-finding. So my sense is that there are, there remain barriers and stigma for people or that they're uncomfortable in raising complaints in some instances. But in a different circumstance, that they are forthcoming with that complaint in order to allow it to be managed.
So that, I guess that's telling me that, yes, there probably is under-reporting and it comes to light later on, but it's not answering the question I asked, which was, do you have any sense of the extent to which it might not be being reported for that array of reasons that were put up for us?
Commissioner, I don't think I do have a clear sense of the extent of that.
Is there any way, other than the survey that Mr Singleton was pointing at, is there other ways in which you think you could take action to try and understand that?
I think the most, my assessment is that if we are managing the complaints that are raised fairly and appropriately, that that serves as a way of encouraging people to come forward. And a continued education process to the workforce as to the importance of raising a complaint to enable proper management is, is an approach to that that is an ongoing effort for myself and my team.
And I appreciate both those factors probably apply, but can I just put to you, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if you manage a complaint of unacceptable behaviour, does the complainant actually get told what the outcome is and what the consequences are? Because that is very relevant to whether or not that then impacts the likelihood that other people might come forward. If they don't actually know what happens, it's unlikely to be encouraging of others. So do they know what happens? Do they know the consequences?
Commissioner, the outcomes of an unacceptable behaviour complaint are advised to the complainant and the respondent. However, any follow-on administrative action such as a sanction will not be advised to the complainant in order to preserve personal privacy for the respondent. So there's acknowledgement from the organisation as to whether their complaint was substantiated or not. But as for the way that the organisation deals with it, if an admin sanction was to be pursued, is not.
And I appreciate that there is a rationale behind that. But you perhaps could appreciate the point I'm making, which is that if you say managing complaints fairly is perhaps an encouragement to others, but if all they hear is yes or no, upheld or substantiated, not substantiated, that may not necessarily equate to them feeling like the process has been fair and therefore might encourage others.
Commissioner, my view is that part of managing a complaint is conducting things like fact-finding where the respondent and the complainant and any other witnesses are interviewed. That process in itself is a demonstration from the organisation that we are dealing with it, even though it doesn't necessarily get ahead of any formal outcomes. So there are, it's the undertaking of the process and its management that I think conveys a level, probably not to the extent that everyone would like, but it does demonstrate that the organisation is doing something.
And again, I accept what you're saying at one level, but can I say to you that we have sat through many sessions where people have told us they've made complaints? And I'm not specifically speaking about submariners here, I must emphasise. But where people have told us they've, they've made complaints and there has been a fact-finding or some kind of administrative process that follows. And at the end of it, nothing happens. And their sense is the closing of ranks. Sometimes they allege cover-ups. The outcome is not necessarily satisfactory to them. They don't necessarily feel it's fair. So again, whilst I accept what you're saying, that there's a process and it is a demonstration of good faith, I guess the experience that we've heard about is that it's not experienced as fair or good faith in some circumstances. I don't know how you get around that. But I guess the point is the process in and of itself is not necessarily enough to encourage people to come forward. I might leave that question, line of questioning there. Can I move on to just ask about the service separation threshold that Mr Singleton talked about, which kind of limits how much time away people can spend from, from family, et cetera, assuming their family is in the same place? Can an individual volunteer to exceed their SST?
Yes, Commissioner, the Separated Service Threshold is a control measure to allow ideally forecasting, but at the least identification that someone is, is meeting a threshold. ideally forecasting, but at the least identification that someone is, is meeting a threshold. And there's varying levels of decision-making once that threshold is met. And at the lowest level of threshold, it involves asking the member whether they're, they're willing to commit to further separated service.
So it's, it's essentially the minimum they must do, not the maximum?
No, Commissioner, the, the minimum threshold, so it's a graduated scale of, of separated service. So at, if, if you were, if I was to characterise it as 100% of separated, if your separated service threshold meets the, the highest point, the actions would be likely posting that person from a submarine. But before we get to that point, when we've identified that in fact it's heading in that direction, or we need to exceed the limit, it involves engagement with the member to determine whether they're willing to remain on. So it's not a minimum level, it is the lowest level of the threshold.
So how voluntary is the volunteering? And I guess the other way of rephrasing that is how much pressure might be exerted to influence a decision to remain available?
The separated service threshold has been used within fleet, I think, for about 12 months. There's been one incident, one instance I can recall where a member met the, the threshold and the command team engaged with him to determine if he was happy to remain at sea. I, I acknowledge there is a possibility that pressure could be applied, but these are discussions that would be led by the commanding officer and, and, and therefore I've, I've got confidence that, that they understand the policy, they understand what we're trying to achieve, which is sustainable employment of personnel and that, that they've got a good sense of what is, what should be, how to go about the best outcome.
Okay, I might come back to that. Can I just ask a question? You mentioned burnout and you said it's not particularly measurable. I'm just wondering, and I accept you may not be able to answer this, but are you aware of whether Navy or ADF more broadly has actually looked into the more recent literature around burnout? Because there is, there has been in recent times a lot more interest in burnout and indeed in measurements of burnout.
Yes, Commissioner, there were some reports forwarded by Navy People Branch last year, if I recall, to educate on what burnout is and how it can be potentially managed, which I recall reading.
Were they still saying that there are no measures?
I don't recall as to whether they, whether it was articulated there, whether it could be measured or not. I've, my view has formed on, I guess my current understanding.
Okay, thank you. Just in relation to the reports that the Navy psychs compile around the submariner mental health surveillance reports, I just wondered, you said that it gets discussed with yourself as com-sub. Are there discussions with anyone else? For example, does it get discussed with the Joint Health Command, you know, for example, the medical people, so they can say, well, actually that kind of aligns with what we're seeing in the clinical setting? Do you ever kind of triangulate the data with, for example, Defence Member and Family Services who might be hearing the family side of the story? How do you actually try and build the big picture as opposed to the data coming out of one survey?
Commissioner, the, the, as the, a unit or a submarine completes their, their, their survey block, the outcomes are debriefed to the commanding officer. The survey results are uploaded into the member's health file to support, to provide a data point within the health system. If there is, if, if, if the survey and screening by the, by the psychology team indicate that a referral was required, that then they will go about and doing that and therefore engage with the medical community. So there is a, a level of using that information, both with health and with command, but I, I don't, to, to the best of my knowledge, that information is not passed with, to DMFS.
Appreciate that. Do you ever get anything from DF, DMFS that, you know, comes the other way from them saying to you, we're getting reports of increased issues here? And I'm not, yeah, because I'm not necessarily saying just pass the report on to others. I'm saying, how do you get information from different sources to put together to actually best understand the health and wellbeing status of, of your crew?
The reports that we receive from DMFS are usually in result to a request for a specific individual. And to my knowledge, we haven't asked DMFS to take a snapshot of the family situation for a particular crew in order to correlate it with a, a mental health screening.
So my last couple of questions. Mr Singleton was asking you about the, and I think in your statement, you talked about needing to balance short term versus longer term kind of priorities. And I think in your answer, you said it's often the urgent kind of things that do have to be attended to, which kind of implies that perhaps some of the longer term ones don't get as much attention as perhaps they might otherwise. I guess the question I have after listening today to your, your testimony is, you know, we heard about unacceptable behaviours and what's done and perhaps not done. We've heard about data, a little bit about the possibility of health data around suicidality that's not really fed in. We hear, hear that there's a little bit about burnout, not a lot. What priority is actually given to the health and wellbeing of the personnel as opposed to all of the other priorities that you have to manage, which may be more pressing in a sense? Because these things are, the unacceptable behaviour, the suicidality, the burnout, they're not raising their head on a daily basis. So what, you know, what assurance can you give me about the priority that is given?
Commissioner, within Navy, it is clear that our workforce are our, you know, are our biggest enabler for capability. And therefore, in my capacity, trying to, trying to ensure the best outcome for the workforce is, is my, is one of my top considerations. But the, I can't, my, my, my focus is on the, I guess, the, trying to generate a structure or system that supports sustainable employment. And then as it goes down into the submarine and the submarine chain of command and the divisional system, their best place to try and manage at the individual level, the, so for example, the, the, the submarine commanding officer will have the best perspective on whether we're employing someone on a submarine who needs a break, needs to take leave, is at risk of burnout. And then their, their first, they will have the first opportunity to try and resolve that matter via standing the person down, sending them on leave or asking for a relief when it's, if they can, if they can sort that out internally, then I'm entrusting them to do that. And if they need assistance from, from my end to, to, to resolve it, then, then I will get involved. And if it's not a, a matter that I can control the outcome of, then I'll seek either prioritisation further up the chain of command or engage with the right stakeholders to get the best outcome. So most of the individual management with respect to your question, I think, is done by, at the, at the, at the local level.
And, and look, I, I accept absolutely everything you said, but if I could perhaps just say to you in response, it seems to be based almost on a system of trust. And again, as a Commissioner, listening to stories over the last 22 months or so, that system hasn't necessarily safeguarded people. So I'm, I'm kind of left wondering how we can trust that the system is working. I'll leave it at that, that's a comment rather than a question.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Captain. Can I take you back to paragraphs 29 and 30 of your statement? You've got a copy there, have you?
Yes.
Paragraph 30 is the one I'm focusing on, but perhaps paragraph 29 explains why you say in paragraph 30, "I am aware that I can access workplace behaviour surveys conducted by DPG, but I do not use that data in my current role." Those workplace behaviour surveys, can they also be described as mental health and wellbeing questionnaires?
No, Commissioner, they are a, a different product. The workplace behaviour surveys are the cross-Navy snapshot of, of climate run by, conducted by DPG.
I raise the question because you said to Mr Singleton by, just before the last break, about how to reduce or remove unacceptable behaviour, that you'd do it by reviewing mental health and wellbeing questionnaires and engaging with stakeholders that are engaged with the submarine and the crew as well. So how do those mental health and wellbeing questionnaires differ from the workplace behaviour surveys? And how do they help you, perhaps where the workplace behaviour surveys don't so much?
My understanding, Commissioner, of the workplace behaviour surveys is they are a snapshot across Navy by people that opt in to complete a survey. In the, in a, in the mental health wellbeing survey, it is, every member of that crew will complete the survey and the report which is provided to the commanding officer reflects across the whole crew for that specific platform. So it's not an opt-in, it's a compulsory activity.
And how frequently are they, are they performed?
Commissioner, the surveys are conducted annually.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick points if I can cover, Captain. In your statement, I don't know whether you actually need to see this, it's just about your career, but at point 16, you said you've completed the Navy Leadership Development Workshop continuum, which is, offers the opportunity of a 360 degree assessment and so on. How long was that programme? How long did it run, does it run for? Is it a couple of hours or?
Commissioner, the Navy Leadership Development Workshop is, runs for the order of, I think, two to three days.
One-off?
There's, well, there's three workshops, so you do them at, conduct them at different levels. So there's workshop one, two and three. They're generally done in a stepped approach over the course of your time as, at varying ranks. But yes, they are just conducted, once you've done the workshop once, I don't believe there's a requirement to do the workshop again.
And when did you do that?
I think I did the Navy Leadership Development Workshop as a, as a lieutenant commander. So that would have been, I assess around about the 2014 timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Who else does it? What, what ranks would be eligible to do that programme? Or what ranks did it with you?
Commissioner, if I recall, the workshop level three, the, the workshops are aimed at lieutenant, lieutenant commander and chief petty officer, warrant officer level. I understand that the programme has been restructured now from that, so it's evolved. And I am not in a position to advise what the, what the current programme is at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And was it, I'm just trying to understand, was it a pass fail thing or is it simply being lectured? Were there exams, assignments?
There was no exams or assignments, Commissioner.
So it's mainly lectures?
Lectures and a workshop, practical exercises.
Thank you. Earlier, you saw on the screen, the two reports that came out in relation to psych issues from March 2019 and then November 2022. And I think we all agreed that it's, things had not improved, things were heading in the wrong direction, just in very simple terms. And you can only tell us what you know. From what you know, what action was taken by Navy and ADF in relation to those two reports? So there were two reports, and I think a lot of the, the issues mentioned in the report were heading in the wrong direction. What action was taken that you're aware of to address the negative trend?
So the, the, the actions that I have taken during my tenure are consistent with the recommendations of that report. So the recommendations in 2022 as a result of that report, I read and acknowledged and has informed my, my thinking on things that I'm doing since then to, to promote a sustainable workforce. And I can provide examples if, if desired.
Okay, thank you. One other issue, Commissioner Brown asked in relation to people not being informed, and I think, correct me if I've got it wrong, essentially if I make a complaint against someone, there's an investigation, an outcome is advised, but out of that outcome, if there's any action or consequences or implications for those who may have been found who have done the wrong thing, that's not advised to the complainant because it breaches privacy. Have I got that right?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Is there any discussion about changing that? Because if you look at any court system or any tribunal system, frankly, anything that's a non-military organisation, it certainly doesn't give people closure if you tell them, you know, someone's, that your complaint has been sustained, but we can't tell you what action we took. Can, can you see how that would be extremely unsatisfying?
Yes, Commissioner, I can.
Is there any discussion about changing that?
Not that I'm aware of, although if the matter was to be resolved through disciplinary means, there is now some level of visibility that's advertised now by higher DFDA proceedings as to the outcome, which may, which the complainant may have access to. But within, with most unacceptable behaviour, adverse action from my experience is resolved through the administrative system. And I acknowledge that the, that the complainant's lack of visibility over what that is, is not, not desirable. And I'm unaware of, of any conversations to change that.
Okay, I appreciate it's not your position to change it, but I'm happy to hear you. I think you're in agreement with what I'm saying essentially.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it from us. Ms Wright, any issues?
No, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr Fraser, representing New South Wales online, I think, any issues you wish to raise?
No questions, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr Singleton, any matters arising?
Nothing, thank you, Commissioners. Might this hearing now be adjourned and will resume according to the programme?
Certainly for the public, we'll adjourn until tomorrow morning at 9am, I believe. And we'll adjourn for 15 minutes now. Thank you.
All rise. The Royal Commission is adjourned for 30 minutes with public hearings.
The Royal Commission is adjourned for 30 minutes with public hearings resuming tomorrow, Thursday, 18 May at 9am.